Everyone, good evening. As the lowest ranking member of the team at the moment, my name is Daniel Padigian. I am the program chief for the water program at Mass DEP. I have with me Kathy Baskin, who's the Assistant Secretary. Excuse me, I'm sorry for the promotion. Kathy's Assistant Commissioner and Stephanie Mora, who is the Division Director for Wetlands and Waterways. I hope that this is the second time you're hearing my voice within the last few minutes. We're going to wait for a few more minutes while folks migrate over from the original Zoom link to this one. Please accept our apologies for this. Turns out, the suggestion, I'm going to give one of the four-point neighbors, one of our four-point neighbors credit for saying, please update the link to allow for more people. That update does not come without a price, and that price was this few minutes of craziness in the original link. So please accept my apologies. We'll get started in just a few minutes. Thank you. And let me just say, when you're on mute, you're all wonderful listeners. Thank you.
If only we had Zoom buttons in.
I knew Bruce Berman would figure that out.
Yeah.
Hi, Bruce. It's great to see you.
Thanks for this. It's nice spending hours and hours with you today.
Well, this time we have capacity for 1,000, so not that we're expecting that many, but we definitely understand that this is a really important topic and we wanted to accommodate folks.
You also should be thanked for not doing a Zoom webinar format, but actually having an unmanageable but still open meeting. It's really important. Thank you for that.
Hopefully not totally unmanageable, but we'll have people on standby, just in case.
I'm going to mute to make it easier to manage.
Nice to see you.
How much time is allotted for the meeting?
Well, I think that the meeting is scheduled for, I think it was advertised for two hours, but certainly the waterways program will want to hear folks' comments. So I'm not sure. It's a hard cutoff at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Just looking at the chat room, it looks a lot like the Boston Municipal Harbor Planning Advisory Committee. It's good to see so many old friends today.
You might want to mute everybody. Try it again. And let's watch that. 97. I think we all get a non-caffeinated beverage if we hit 100. It would be water. This will be repetitious for some of you. I apologize. Good evening. We're waiting just a few minutes to get started. We apologize for the delay. We upgraded our Zoom capacity. That came with a small price of having to do it at the last second. So we apologize for that. I'm just going to wait another few minutes to get folks over. Want to be certain that people who've made that effort get to attend and participate.
Daniel, I in addition to the redirect from the previous meeting link, I also recently resent the email to everybody who had registered. So there are still some folks coming in. But I defer to you when you want to get rolling.
Kathy and Stephanie, I unmuted you. So we are up to 104 attendees at the moment. Three of those are DEP. And we have five in the other room. So I'm going to start some introductory remarks in the hopes that those folks will make it over. We're down to five. All right. Guys missed all my jokes. You know, you all applicants, when are you all going to realize that? Never mind, sorry.
We can start. I think we definitely can start. Yeah.
There we go. Now I can hear all of you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you missed out. So I definitely think we can start. We'll get those other five people in. And I know, you know, we really appreciate everybody's patience so that we could allow more than what we had last time into the room. So thanks, everybody. So yeah, take it away, Daniel.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. All right. Before we start, I'd like to take just a moment to familiarize everyone with with the Zoom. I know that you've all done this before. I have a script. Pardon my script. I'd like to take a moment to review some procedural matters for this hearing. The department has been holding virtual public hearings for over a year now, but the occasional glitch occurs. In the event there are any other issues, we will work through anything that comes up and make sure that everyone who would like to participate in this evening's hearing has an opportunity to be heard. Please familiarize yourself with the Zoom controls at the bottom of your screen. There is mute, stop video, security, participants, et cetera. Please note that this hearing is being recorded. If you choose not to be recorded, you can turn off your video button. Please note the under the where is it? I guess I don't know where the raise hand button is. Let's see. There is a raise hand button there. I'm afraid I tried to point to it and failed there. Please use that button later in the hearing in order to be recognized, to be heard, to give verbal testimony. Anyone wishing to provide comment this evening or provide testimony, if you could please go to the chat and indicate that you would wish to speak. We will take those persons in that order. Raise your hand if you have any difficulty in finding that. In a few moments, I will read the public hearing. After the public hearing, excuse me, I will read the public notice. After the public notice, I will make a short presentation. And then individuals who wish to speak will be provided an opportunity to do so.
Where is the raise hand button on the screen? So I'm having trouble locating it, too.
You look at the participants tab.
Part of the stop video button. The dropdown.
Oh, and the stop.
It's actually under reactions. If you click on reactions, it usually shows up there.
That's where it is. Okay, it's under reactions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, whoever that was. I appreciate that. After the presentation, there will be an opportunity to comment or to ask questions. Those of you who have phoned in and will not have, or not have visual access, will not have the ability to raise or lower your hand. So I will unmute you one at a time using, identifying you by the last four-digit phone number to see if you'd like to speak. We will afford elected or appointed officials the opportunity to speak first. If there are any elected officials, elected or appointed officials present today, could you please raise your hand or identify yourself in the chat so that we may record your name and we can call on you early in the beginning of the public comment period? While this hearing is being recorded and the department will be making notes, we have three staff people on the call now. We will be taking notes. We strongly suggest that parties interested in submitting comments provide so in writing as well. Those comments can be submitted electronically by email to depwaterways@mass.gov. I will be giving that address several times this evening. Please include Chapter 91, MHP Regulations in the subject line. If you do not have access to email or wish to send a hard copy, that may be mailed to Daniel Padigian, P-A-D-I-E-N, Mass DEP Waterways Program, One Winter Street, Fifth Floor, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108. I will give that address again later in this presentation. Before we begin, any logistical questions? Anyone have any difficulty that needs to be solved so they can participate? Please raise your hand, or I guess that's your only choice. Okay. Nope. Not seeing any hands raised. We're going to continue. Before I begin, two announcements. One, again, this meeting is being recorded. Two, in response to public comment, public request, the department has decided to hold two additional public hearings on this matter. Those hearings will be in mid-July. We are working with the Secretary of State's office to schedule those meetings. The time, date, and method for participating them will be announced in a public notice published in the Massachusetts Register in two papers of local circulation, those being the Boston Globe and the Fall River Herald. That information will also be posted on the department's website. We will make efforts to provide that announcement to any individual who signed up for this morning's hearing, the six o'clock hearing that was originally listed, and anyone who signed up for this. So all three, any individual who signed up to attend either of these hearings tonight will also receive an email with a link to that public notice. The department is eager to have any and all individuals who wants to participate in this process that they have the full opportunity to do so. If for some reason someone needs a translator for the next hearing or has had difficulty, needs items to be translated, written materials or otherwise, I personally request that you, well, you identify that or your colleague identify that to us, and we will make accommodations to be certain that that person has the opportunity to participate. Okay, I think that's all the immediate logistics. I will now start the actual hearing. Hello, my name is Daniel Padigian. I am the Program Chief for the Massachusetts DEP Waterways Program. Here with me this evening is Stephanie Mora, Division Director for Wetlands and Waterways, and Kathy Baskin, Assistant Commissioner to the Department. Alice Doyle, Regional Planner, will be joining us shortly. Together, we constitute the hearing panel for tonight's remote public hearing. This is a remote public hearing to consider the department's draft regulations from Chapter 91, 310 CMR 9.00 regarding municipal harbor planning. Copies of the draft regulations, summary of the changes, and other materials may be found on the department's website or by emailing depwaterways@mass.gov. The format for today's hearing will be as follows. I will read the public notice into the record, which describes the purpose of the hearing and methods for submitting comments. Then I will make a brief presentation and open the floor for public comments. The department will be taking written testimony today, but strongly encourages individuals wishing to comment on these regulations to submit their comments in writing. Please hold all of your questions until after the presentation. Following the department's presentation, we will open the floor to comments and public testimony, calling first on elected or appointed officials and then the general public. When you are called, please state your name and affiliation, if applicable. While we understand that public testimony today may be lengthy, we want to be certain that everyone wishing to speak has the opportunity to do so. If a comment ends up being rather lengthy, you will excuse me for interrupting it at an appropriate moment so that others may speak. We will then circle back to you, to that person, so that you may submit the rest of your testimony. Lastly, we strongly encourage comments to be submitted in writing so that they are fully on the record, fully accessible, and the department may consider them in full. I will now read the public notice. I've been waiting for that. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Public Hearing Notice. This public hearing notice is available in alternative languages on Mass DEP's website, website given. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 150A, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is proposing regulatory amendments to 310 CMR 9. These amendments would modify the provisions related to municipal harbor planning, effectively affirming Mass DEP's approval of each of the existing plans through incorporation into 310 CMR 9. The regulatory text and a background document are available with a copy of this public notice on DEP's website. Pursuant to Governor Charles D. Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, dated March 12, 2020, two public hearings will be conducted online and via telephone. These public hearings will be held at the following dates and times. One o'clock this afternoon, six o'clock this evening. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email with the information needed to join the meeting. Please join the public hearing from your computer, tablet, or smartphone. You can also dial in using your phone. Testimony will be presented orally at the public hearing, or written comments may be submitted by 5:00 PM on June 22, 2021. Please hold for an update on that point later. Written comments must be submitted, excuse me, written comments may be submitted by email to depwaterways@mass.gov or or by mail to Daniel, P-A-D-I-E-N, Massachusetts DEP Waterways Regulation Program, One Winter Street, Fifth Floor, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108. Mass DEP provides language access interpreter, translation services to limited English proficient individuals free of charge. If you need an interpreter to participate in this meeting, translation services can be found at the link given. By order of the Department of Environmental Protection, Martin Sueberg, Commissioner. You're all still with me. Thank you. Stephanie, please nod your head if you can see my presentation. Thank you very much. Thank you again for joining us. I'm going to make a brief presentation. I have eight slides. At the end of those eight slides, I look forward to hearing from any and all of you. This is the update later that I mentioned regarding the schedule. The proposed development approval promulgation of these regs is as follows. The public notice was published in the Boston Globe and the Fall River Herald on May 14. This afternoon at 1:00, we had a public hearing. This is the second public hearing. Again, based on public comment and public request, the department is scheduling two further hearings. Those will be in mid-July. Hearing number three will be in the afternoon. Hearing number four will be in the evening. Again, the time, date, method for attending those will be published in those newspapers in the Massachusetts Register and on the department's website. Any individual not able to identify those, thinks they missed it, et cetera, please email depwaterways@mass.gov. We will be certain to get you the public notice. The public comment deadline, which was formally last week, in one of the last two weeks in June, I think it was June 22, will be extended based on the dates of the hearing number three and number four. I don't know what that date is just yet. That's based, we will, that date will be determined and included in the public notice after we have conferred with the Secretary of State's Office regarding publication of our notice in the Massachusetts Register. The department will make a robust effort to be certain that that public notice is distributed, and any individual who has registered for this or the prior hearing will receive it by email. Again, we are keenly interested in people being able to attend and participate in this process. I'd like to give a little bit of background to Chapter 91. For those individuals who do not practice in this area frequently, I know some of you know it as well or better than I do. I want to be certain everyone's on the same footing. The purpose of Chapter 91 is inherently to protect the inherent public trust rights in filled and flowed tidelands. That means existing tidal waters, anything in the ocean. I think I was muted for a second. Again, the jurisdiction extends in tidal waters up to the mean high watermark and in filled tidelands up to the historic high watermark, which is the most landward line that might be ascertained by using maps, surveys, et cetera, for the high watermark that existed prior to human alteration. A Massachusetts DEP issued license or permit is required, but any change in use or structural alteration within those lands or waters within the confines of the regulations. The obvious exception to that are landlocked tidelands. Landlocked tidelands are filled tidelands that have been so effectively separated from the water sheet that their connection to the shoreline has been severed. That is defined in the statute and in the regulations as filled tidelands, which are located 250 feet or more from the mean high watermark and are separated by one or more continuous public ways. Those are landlocked tidelands. They do not require a license. They are reviewed under separate provisions as a public benefit determination. What's going on here? There we go. I got stuck there for a second. I'm unstuck. Chapter 91 creates limitations on development in order to achieve the goal I listed on the prior slide. Not going to read all of these, but I'll probably read a couple. Chapter 91 does all of these things. It protects public access to tidelands, protects water-dependent uses of keen interest to all of you tonight, might be that it creates building height limitations. It also creates open space limitations and ground floor limitations within Commonwealth tidelands. Okay, all of these things it does. A Mass DEP license or permit is required for a wide range of uses and activities in areas subject to Chapter 91 jurisdiction. Now, the topic of municipal harbor planning. Municipal harbor plans, the option four was created in order to provide local input to reflect local considerations in certain licensing matters the department would pursue. A municipal harbor plan must be requested by the municipality. The Commonwealth, neither the department nor CZM nor EEA would commence the preparation of a harbor plan without the request, without the request. without the, at the request, without the request of the municipality. In fact, they are written by the municipality. Preparation is supervised by the Office of Coastal Zone Management with the close participation by Mass DEP Waterways Regulation Program. The decision, the decision on an MHP does not go to the secretary until the department concurs that the municipal harbor plan will result in a proper public purpose. Following the department's concurrence, it goes to the secretary for approval. The preparation of a harbor plan is variable. My friends at CZM said, please don't say it takes one year. It takes between a year and two, year and three years to prepare. Last note here. Municipal harbor plans are typically approved for a period of five years. The secretary has the discretion to issue them for different length of times. And there are also renewal and extension provisions available in the regulations. The draft regulations the department has published seek to achieve the following things. First, they affirm DEP's concurrence to the existing municipal harbor plans, affirming the department's authority to approve them. Demonstrates how, demonstrates that they need a proper public purpose. Defines approved municipal harbor plan and then incorporates each of the 17 existing municipal harbor plans and all of their offsets, substitutions, and amplifications within the regulations. Yeah, I'm stuck. So, that is the shortest presentation I've ever given at a hearing. Any individual, group, entity, et cetera wishing to submit public comments is encouraged to do so. The department strongly prefers electronic submittal of comments for ease of distribution, cataloging, responding, et cetera. Hard copies may also be submitted to the address below. Please include an attention line or subject line as shown here, referencing the Chapter 91 MHP regulations. Okay, the hard copy is going to be addressed to me, Daniel P A D I E N, the address given. So, that is my brief presentation. We would like to now provide an opportunity for anyone and everyone to offer, to offer testimony. I lost my pen. Stephanie, could you please unmute? So, do we have any elected officials present this evening?
I have not noticed any in the participants list.
Patricia Nolan?
Yeah, I'm just a local elected official from Cambridge City Council. Does that count?
It counts if you live in Cambridge. Yes, it does.
I do. Sorry, I just myself, and I will be just very brief. I really appreciate this. My concern as a city councillor, obviously, the very end of the city is related to Boston Harbor. We have other waterfronts. It's just that we desperately need to make sure that resiliency is included in planning, that we don't also ever lose sight of the fact that public access is critical. And it seems like there's a concern that some of the regulations may actually limit that, may change some of the setbacks. And we have so little ability for the public to actually access this through the various municipal harbor plans that, that I'm just concerned, again, for those two issues, the public access, the setbacks, actually three issues, and particularly the climate resiliency is not at the forefront of all of these regulations. So I hope that DEP takes those into account and takes it very seriously that we need to do far more around that as we do the Chapter 91 regulations.
Thank you, Patricia. Please note the regulations, the draft of the regulations provided on the website provide a red line. You can see the, the very specific items that the department is seeking to revise in the current Chapter 91 regulations.
Daniel, there's a request that you wanted to stop screen sharing so we can...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I will do that. Are there any, any other elected or appointed officials present? Could raise your hand, please, virtually or otherwise. All right, I'll see. I'll see anyone else.
I'm not seeing.
Okay. All right. So we have a list of individuals who would like to testify?
You need to remind them to put their name and affiliation in the chat.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak this evening, we're, we're asking that you indicate that in the chat. The chat button is at the bottom of the screen. Click on chat and it's there and you can submit a message to everyone or to Stephanie or myself. I encourage you to either click everyone or to Stephanie, as I will not be checking the chat as, as often as Stephanie's.
Excellent. Okay, so as of now, there have been two people that have indicated a desire to speak, and those are Peter Shelley from Representing Conservation Law Foundation and Lorraine Downey. And I will continue to monitor the chat to see if anybody else...
And I see Kathy Abbott asked to speak as well.
Yep, okay, gotcha. Yep.
All right, in fact, I think...
As, as did Vicky Spruill.
I, yes, I think, I think the, the first one to request to, to speak was Kathy Abbott, so I'm gonna...
Actually, sorry, I'm, I'm trying to track these in order way, way up top. We had Peter Shelley, Lorraine Downey, then Kathy Abbott, and I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep those in a row.
Not playing favorites. Everybody gets to speak. I apologize. I guess I gotta...
I'm gonna step in and support Vicky that she was the first one at 6:22 PM. Hi, everybody. This is Jill. It's good to see you all.
I, I will vote that, I'm Lorraine Downey. I'll vote that Kathy Abbott should speak before me.
All right. The motion carries. Kathy Abbott, you have the floor.
Well, I'm honored, Lorraine. Thank you very much. And, and Vicky, I apologize for jumping in front of you if you were in fact at whatever time it was. Hi, everybody. Kathy Abbott from Boston Harbor Now, and very happy to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on these proposed, proposed amendments to the Waterways Regulation, which address the need to clarify the status of previous changes originally put forward in municipal harbor plans across the Commonwealth. Boston Harbor Now's mission is to ensure that our waterfront is climate resilient, accessible, and welcoming to all, and helps to create a world-class coastal city, or in the case of these regulations, a world-class Commonwealth of coastal cities. The draft regulations seek to clarify the status of the municipal harbor plans that have already been adopted and implemented through licensed projects which have provided valuable public benefits. While this is an important goal, there are other important considerations which must be addressed in this process. As a waterfront advocacy organization with a regional focus, we believe that municipal harbor planning is an important tool for municipalities and the public to be able to shape their waterfronts to meet the particular needs of specific places. It allows municipalities to modify by way of substitutions and amplifications, as Daniel had said, the dimensional requirements of Chapter 91, the state's public trust law. We also emphasize that Chapter 91 has as its primary focus the protection of the public's right in current and former tidelands. It is designed to prioritize these public rights of a private interest and create an accessible waterfront for everyone. These municipal harbor plans, however, they are ultimately approved, must provide for equitable access to the waterfronts across the Commonwealth and incorporate climate resiliency measures that will preserve such access for the future. While these amendments will provide clarity with respect to the existing municipal harbor plans, they do not provide a clear path forward for proven municipal harbor plans in the future. Mass DEP must continue to carry out its mandate to protect valuable environmental resources and provide for public access to our shared waterfront. This includes prioritizing equity, access, and resilience in waterfront development. Large projects should carry with them comparably enlarged public benefits. In all areas where these municipal harbor plans apply, the public's rights in tidelands is paramount. Retroactive approval of the existing municipal harbor plans alone will not achieve this result. We look forward to continuing to work in partnership with Mass DEP and other state and city agencies, as well as the private sector, to create the accessible and resilient waterfronts across the Commonwealth that are envisioned by the public trust law. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kathy.
And I apologize for the things being out of order. Some people are messaging directly and others are messaging to everyone, so we'll, we'll get our stride here. So it appears that Vicky Spruill would be up next from New England Aquarium.
And here.
You're muted.
I wasn't sure if you did that or if I did that. I apologize. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Kathy, for this opportunity to testify this evening, and, and thank you for your public service. I'm delighted to be here. My name is Vicky Spruill. I'm the president and CEO of the New England Aquarium. And though we are best known for being a beloved tourist destination in Boston, the aquarium is a conservation organization first and foremost that's deeply concerned about climate change and its implications for both the world's oceans and our very own home, right here on Central Wharf. The aquarium is also a designated water-dependent use and special public destination facility. We serve significant community needs. We attract a broad range of people to the waterfront, and we provide innovative amenities for public use. Our priorities for the downtown waterfront are accessibility, inclusivity, and climate resilience. This precious resource should be a waterfront for all. We understand Mass DEP has proposed these regulations to respond to the April Superior Court decision that found parts of Boston's downtown municipal waterfront municipal harbor plan and the process that created it invalid. While Mass DEP needs to address the court's decision and make changes to its MHP approval process, whatever fix is proposed should not affirmatively reinstate the downtown waterfront MHP. The decision offers us a rare second chance to get it right. For Mass DEP to reinstate this MHP would be to abdicate its responsibility as a steward of the public trust. The downtown waterfront MHP has several fatal flaws, and I will outline them briefly here. First, despite a robust public process that included many public meetings, the final MHP failed to take wide-ranging community input and priorities seriously, a fact which was noted in the secretary's own approval of the MHP. Second, it deferred the bulk of the planning, any, including any significant engagement on resiliency to later processes. And third, it served primarily to authorize two private developers' pathways to permit large, out-of-scale projects with heights far greater than those allowed under baseline Chapter 91 regulations on the Harbor Garage and Hook Wharf sites. In fact, the substitute height provision for the Harbor Garage was four times higher than the allowed 150 feet with limited required public benefits. This approach effectively declared that our waterfront was for sale. We're now seeing the results of those decisions and of this disaster. Development proposals that would permanently harm the public's ability to access and engage with the waterfront by creating irreversible wind and shadow impacts on the adjacent public realm space along the waterfront negatively impact the neighborhood's ability to implement a district-wide climate solution by isolating and elevating the individual sites to the detriment of the abutting properties. And this would further solidify Boston's waterfront as an exclusive destination accessible only to people with financial means. We fundamentally agree with the Superior Court that there was a process in place that was open to misuse by a municipality under the right circumstances, which is what happened with the downtown waterfront MHP. There's a reason that this downtown waterfront MHP generated the lawsuit in the first place that led the Superior Court to the Superior Court's invalidation. It failed to safeguard the public's access to and enjoyment of the tidelands, which the Commonwealth is supposed to protect under Chapter 91 and the centuries-old public trust doctrine. Mass DEP has an independent obligation to review any MHP to ensure that it preserves the public's rights in tidelands, protects water-dependent activities, and promotes public access. We do not believe those standards were met in 2018 in a process that was subject to political pressures under any circumstance. However, we believe, we certainly believe the MHP deserves a reevaluation in 2021 in light of the pressing need to maintain equitable access to the waterfront, to protect waterfront-dependent uses, and to incorporate the best thinking in climate resilience. We know so much more today than we knew in 2018 about how to get this right. The fatal flaws in this MHP are so fundamental that Mass DEP cannot and should not affirmatively reinstate it as it proposes to do today. We're deeply concerned about the impact that doing so would have on the aquarium, on Central Wharf, as a public gathering space that is the first, second, or third public attraction to our city and Commonwealth, and on Boston's downtown waterfront more broadly. Boston deserves the protection for its waterfront that Chapter 91 mandates, full stop. And as many of the candidates for mayor of Boston have noted publicly, we have an opportunity here to create a waterfront for all that aligns with our place as a visionary city that values resiliency, accessibility, and inclusivity. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Vicky.
Let me just go through. There's some... The order that we currently have now would be Peter Shelley, Conservation Law Foundation, Lorraine Downey. Heather Hoffman is a Cambridge resident who said she had a question. And then I noticed Victor Brogna has a raised hand, so I'm going to assume that means that Victor would like to speak. So next up, Peter Shelley, then Lorraine Downey.
Stephanie, if you could just put me at the end, because I am learning different perspectives that can make my view change a little bit.
Happy to, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Good evening. Peter Shelley, Senior Counsel with the Conservation Law Foundation. Thank you, Daniel, and Stephanie, and Commissioner Baskin for this opportunity. And Commissioner Baskin, it's been a long time. It's nice to be on the same call, even though it's a Zoom with you. Conservation Law Foundation is the named plaintiff in the sister suit to the Armstrong case challenging the downtown municipal harbor plan, which we brought on behalf of our members. When CLF commented on DEP's first comprehensive set of tidelands regulations in the late 1980s, we questioned the legal and policy basis for the MHP program, warning at that time that the program, if it was not strictly applied, could just become a private developer's end run around the standards and limitations that are in DEP's tidelands program, not a mechanism to improve that program. Our warning unfortunately has now borne fruit. The Superior Court properly determined DEP's MHP program to be unauthorized by the legislature and invalid. The court's ruling provides a critical opportunity, in our view, to revisit the 30-year-old municipal harbor planning process and program to get it right for the world that we're all living in at present, not the one that was there in 1990, to take advantage of a critical opportunity to develop a community engagement procedure with a transparent and inclusive public decision process and to ensure that the MHP promotes greater public benefits, a requirement that has been more or less lost in recent years. We believe there's also an opportunity now to redesign the MHP program in the face of climate change. Climate change was not even a thing back in 1990 Climate change was not even a thing back in 1990, let alone a major coastal threat. We need to address that, and the MHP regulations are the way to do that, one way to do that. The proposed regulations, however, seem to only have one purpose, which is to make the court decision go away. We think they're a cynical response to the legitimate issues raised by the court. We also think there are a number of numerous problems. There are numerous problems with the proposed regulations, and we'll highlight those at the moment. First, they're not even really regulations, as regulations are intended to be of general effect and future application. These are all retrospective in nature, so I'm not even sure they're regulations, as that term is known in Massachusetts law. Second, it's really not clear what's going on with these regulations. The DEP summary document says that the purpose of the regulations is to, quote, "ratify and confirm" the department's MHP concurrences and to, quote, "confine the validity, confirm the validity of all licenses," end quote, issued under those MHPs. The regulation changes themselves talk about the department adopting earlier substitute regulatory provisions. But DEP and its concurrences never made proper public purpose determinations, either in the past or in these regulations. Are these regulations intended to be DEP substantive public purpose determination? Are they license approvals in a way? Are they something else? The regulations should be clear about what DEP intends to do with these regulations as a substantive matter, excuse me. Third, the department's action is obscured by the way the regulations are set up. Some of the proposed regulations use shorthand references to regulatory substitutes, amplifications, and offsets that are buried in other documents and very difficult to find. The regulations should be very clear on specifically what is being covered by them. Fourth point we would make is these regulations seem absolutely arbitrary to us on their face. Why are some regulatory offsets $3 million while others are $10 million, while others have no offset payments at all? What uniform approach is DEP proposing here in these regulations to these money buyouts from the program? Fifth, many, if not all, of the MHPs identified in these proposed regulations have terminal dates. Some of them are probably at the point where they need to be reviewed and renewed. Is DEP resetting those MHP renewal dates to these regulations? That's not clear and needs to be made clear. Finally, as has been pointed out earlier, the proposed regulations do not provide any process for future MHP situations. This is particularly ironic, given that such regulations would actually be of general effect and future application, but no regulations are provided for those, for that, for new MHPs to be considered. To us, the question is, why wouldn't the department take this opportunity to make these MHP rules fair and equitable for developers and the public alike? There is no immediate crisis from the court's decision, either now or in the near future. CLF urges the department to reconsider these regulations and to take its time and develop an MHP process with uniform and consistent regulatory requirements, a process that is fair to the public and development community alike and embodies full and meaningful community engagement, and an MHP process that emphasizes public benefits over private profit. CLF will be submitted detailed comments elaborating on all these points within the comment period. And again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Peter. I think Lorraine Downey is next.
She had opted to go to the back of the line.
Thank you. Heather Hoffman, please.
Hello, Heather Hoffman. I live in East Cambridge, as I put in the chat, and I want to thank the people who spoke before me for educating me a lot on this. I came into this pretty green, and I was hopeful that I'd learned something, and that's definitely come true. I am a real estate lawyer and title examiner, so what Mr. Shelley had to say resonated the most with me and made me think of the reaction to the moot case. Now, had I been civically active the way I am now a few years earlier, I might have been one of the moot plaintiffs, because I live really close to North Point, and I hung around with some of those guys. In the moot case, you had a similar regulations being disallowed by a court, and so the response is not to revisit this stuff and try to do things right under Chapter 91. Instead, it is to brush it all under the rug and make it go away. I think that's really a wrong way to handle things. And I understand that state agencies are pretty much underfunded, understaffed, and under a ton of pressure, and I want to join the other people who thank you for all of the work that you have done and that you do, because I know it's not easy. Nonetheless, there we are. It's the work that has to get done by somebody. So, as I said, I do have a question. When you brought up the reference to tidelands, filled tidelands, you mentioned Commonwealth tidelands, landlocked tidelands. My question is whether these regulations or others, because as I said, I'm pretty green on this, address the issue that the title examiner in me truly cares about, which is the fact that the Commonwealth owns Commonwealth tidelands. So what happens? How do these regulations deal with that issue that, you know, I can't go and build on your backyard? Can someone go and build on Commonwealth tidelands without getting a proper license from the Commonwealth? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nobody likes to talk about jurisdictional boundaries more than I do, but I think I'm going to defer much of that. There are some really good guides on our website. I will put that link in the chat, and I don't mean to defer you entirely. I think that would be unfair. The statute, Chapter 91, Section 18, I believe, and the waterways regulations, you can also get those from our website, is 310 CMR 9. They differentiate between what can happen on private tidelands and Commonwealth tidelands, including a building of mixed-use buildings that have facilities of private tenancy upstairs. So it's, that's not a short, that's not a short topic. I would encourage you to check out that guide. There are other published guides that you might find if one were to Google something like the People's Guide to Chapter 91. I think there are others on this call who are very familiar with that document. So again, I'm sorry that we can't, I don't think we can spend a lot of time going through all of that, but there are strict rules for what one can do on Commonwealth tidelands, and of course, yes, that they need a license from DEP. Heather, if you, it was Heather, right? Back to my call.
Yeah.
So having said that, Heather, there are lots of resources. If you want to check those resources out, and then if you, I'm saying this to 121 people. If you want to reach out to the department, if you send a question through dep.waterways@mass.gov, you can copy me on it if you'd like. Be happy to get you a little bit of a primer here so that you don't have to be the, you don't have to play catch-up, okay?
I appreciate.
There are others on this call. I'll certainly also be happy to expand to.
I just wanted to point out one tiny thing, because I am the finder of typos. Your mailing address says MPH instead of MHP.
Well, MPH is my niece, as it turns out, so I'm sorry she snuck that in. Thank you very much for pointing that out.
Well, actually, Heather, what's even worse is that one of them says MHP and the other one says MPH, so sorry about that. All right, we have Victor Brogna, who has patiently had his hand raised, and as of right now, other than Lorraine, who wanted to be pushed to the bottom of the line, there are no other folks that have indicated in the chat, oh, there we go, I knew that would bring them out. So we have Victor Brogna, and then is it Fabian Borzenstein would be next? So Victor first.
Okay, this is Victor. Am I unmuted?
Yes, Victor, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, first, my affiliation is with the North End Waterfront Residence Association.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
North End Waterfront.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just didn't hear it. Got it.
Sure. Where I am Chair of Zoning, Licensing, and Construction Committee. I'm going to come at this issue from a different direction. I have to disclose at the beginning that I am strongly aligned with those who oppose the Boston Municipal Harbor Plan, and the direction, other than the substantive reasons for opposition, which have been very well stated by many people, I'm coming at it from a procedural point of view, which is that there have been three procedural defects in the adoption of an MHP, for which I request that DEP remove Boston from its action on this, these proposed regulations. The first procedural defect is interestingly pro, put out ahead in, Daniel, your, one of your slides, which said, quote, "public process duration one to two years," end quote. In fact, that relates to a patient, 301 CMR 23.04, which allows only two years to act on a proposed municipal harbor plan. The CCM approval for this plan came in 2013. That would mean that the plan should have been submitted in 2015. There is a provision in that 23.04 to extend it for six months, but there's no provision for extending it beyond that. And I would ask DEP not to ignore one of its own very important regulations, especially where people have pointed out today that when we started out in 2013, eight years ago, sea level rise was an issue among scientists and hydrologists, but not so much that in the eyes of the public. Today, it is very important. So the passage of time is significant here, and I would say that that's a procedural defect which prevents adoption of this plan. The next procedural defect also comes from the regulations, and that is 301 CMR 23.04 parentheses three parentheses C. That regulated the participation of a harbor planning group in the MHP, Boston MHP procedure. It was the MHP Advisory Committee. It required their participation in post-comment period consultations. Such consultations were in fact held during a period that lasted six, nine months, but without the participation of the advisory committee. The advisory committee wasn't invited to participate in those private discussions between the BPDA and whom, and the DEP, I guess, but they should have been under 23.04 parenth three paren C. I would say that the failure to comply with that regulation was not harmless error, because all the stakeholders in the advisory committee did not get a chance to participate, and the regulation says they should. And finally, another waterways regulation, no, it's not waterways. It's the Open Meeting Law, 904 CMR 29.10 parentheses one. It explains the purpose of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law as promoting transparency with regard to deliberations and decisions on which public policy is based. That was not followed in the nine months of private conversations between the BRA and whoever it is that they were talking to. So I would say that the DEP has a very facile way to get out of the controversy between is this a good plan or a bad plan, and simply to recognize that their own regulations have been violated in two substantial ways. And as I say, please extract the Boston plan from your future action. Thank you.
Victor, thank you for those comments. Some very specific comments. I'm grateful for that. If you could, if you could please submit, this is everyone, I will admit this got my attention as well. If you could please submit those comments in writing with the citations that you're making, the department will take that under advisement. I do understand, without addressing them one at a time here, I do understand that there is an opportunity for multiple extensions of some of those timeframes. Not having that record in front of me, nor have been a direct participant in that particular process, I'm not going to confirm or dispute that. But if you could please put that in writing, that we will take that under advisement, and I mean that with all due respect.
Yes, I will certainly do that. I plan to write a comment letter.
Thank you very much.
Put those references in.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Yeah, we have Fabian Borzenstein, and then Lorraine, if you're still deferring to go last, and we have Bruce Berman after Mr. Borzenstein.
Right. Yep. Nope, I'm learning. This is great.
Okay. Hi, I'm Fabian Borzenstein. I live in Harbor Towers. I hope you can hear me. First, I'd like to thank the previous speakers, in particular, Vicky, Kathy, and Peter, for their eloquent and articulate words. I think they express what many of us believe very, very, very well. It's hard to add too much on top of what they said, but I feel, I like to ask and also comment about my concerns about the fact that a ruling was made about the fact that there was an illegal process. Now, as Peter said, it seems like we are witnessing perhaps a cynical way of bypass the ruling by rubber stamping what was done already illegally. And on top of that, we have, as we all know, new administration, acting administration in the city of Boston, and elections later this year, and as we all know, the acting mayor, and as well as most of the candidates, express their view that they don't support the acting mayor and as well as most of the candidates express their view that they don't support the current MHP. And as I understand, it is a requirement that the municipalities will present and support their MHP to the state. And so here we have a situation where perhaps we may not really follow the spirit, not, not just the letter, but also the spirit of the ruling, but also we may even go against the wishes of the city of Boston administration. So I just have a lot of concern about this, and I'd like to understand what is this mass DEP going to do to reassure the public that this process will be fair and will be taking us a real opportunity to follow the law and not as a way to just simply rubber stamp what was done illegally before that. Thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you, Fabian. I'm grateful for your, your thoughts. I've said this a few times. If you could kindly submit your comments in writing as well, that would be, would be helpful.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephanie?
All right. So as of now, we have, for the folks that have indicated they would like to, to speak or offer testimony is Bruce Berman. There's a question from Lauren Honigan, but I'm not certain if that is just a question or a desire to speak. And then Lorraine Downey, and that's, that's, that's who's on the docket for now.
Another comment in here as well, which the woman indicated she couldn't access her microphone, so we'll get to that in a minute.
Great.
I missed who was next, so please.
So Bruce Berman.
Bruce, I'm sorry, Bruce. I'm not going to pay for that, I know.
No, you're not. Chief Pageant and, and Director Mora and the team from DEP, I want to thank you for being so responsive to the concerns about the size of the room and for quickly acting on it. We truly appreciate it. And it's really nice to, to see so many people that I spent every Wednesday afternoon with as a volunteer in the process of the Municipal Harbor Planning Advisory Committee, which was a process that was set up by an elected and accountable mayor, who's no longer with us, Mayor Menino, because he had a vision for the city. And he asked DEP to help him, to help him run the process. And, and, and I have to say, it was extensive and it was inclusive. And there are those in the room, many of whom live fairly close to one project in Boston, who didn't like the outcome or think they don't like the outcome because that project hasn't finished the process yet. And, and therefore suggesting that you throw the baby out with the bath. I hope that DEP will not do that. I do want to just make two quick comments. Is that the process of municipal harbor planning is, until the complications from the court case, fairly straightforward. The current mayor or the next mayor can ask to do, and probably should, and almost certainly will, a comprehensive municipal harbor plan. And that's the right thing. The local elected officials chosen by us should have some say in how to shape the city. I hope that by its actions, that the DEP will validate those decisions. And, 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 and that said, there's no question that we're, thanks to Kathy and to BPDA and to other folks, we're thought leaders. And, 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 and a model. When it comes to beginning to deal with resiliency, although with the carbon crisis, I don't know whether or not we're going to be able to respond fast enough, have enough dollars to respond. As I was walking after the first hearing today, I'm on the waterfront in Charlestown, looking desperately for some shade and hoping for some, some breeze, but of course, our waterfront doesn't like wind or shadow. As I was doing it, I, I was reminded of, of just how far we've come. And, 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 and that said, can we run a process going forward that's more focused on climate change? Damn right. Do we need to have processes that are more inclusive? And accomplish equity and diversity in both the planning and the outcomes? Absolutely. And I look forward to working with all of you on the next harbor plan that the city of Boston and its leadership submits to DEP, as I think is appropriate in the statute. It doesn't really matter to me who signs the thing, which is what the court decision was about. I, I hope that you will grandfather in all of the plans, including the East Boston Harbor Plan, the Four Point Channel Harbor Plan, the South Boston Harbor Plan, all of which I was privileged to participate in. And which, while I look around the room, I see people that's engaged in spirited debate, I was privileged to serve on it with Vivian Lee of the Boston Harbor Association, now Boston Harbor Now, and with Peter, Peter Shelley's associate, Stephanie Pollak, and Seth, who took part in, in those processes. And, and so I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight. But I also want to thank the 30 people that took part in the planning process because they want to make our city better and our waterfront to move it, as Jack Hart, who was briefly the chair, said, wants to move the waterfront from good to great. Alas, along with that comes traffic and activity and, and, and new things, but that's the way that the world is. Thanks for your time.
Bruce, thank you for your comments. Thank you for participating in those municipal harbor planning committees.
Daniel, now, you said you had somebody on the phone who was unable to unmute. We have Lauren Honigan had a question, but I'm not sure if it is. It was directed just to me, so I think it might. Well, we, we can ask her to unmute herself. And then David Kubiak also raised his hand and would like to speak.
All right. I, I know I have the question here somewhere in the chat. David Kubiak, if you'd like to speak, please, you have the floor.
Okay. And I hope that I'm speaking on behalf of others who may not be as familiar with these proceedings and the regulations and all of that. I, I have not read word for word the court decision, but I assume that it not only determines that the signature of the secretary on the MHP approval was illegal, but that the process of approving those was all, those processes were also illegal. And I had hoped that DEP would now come up with regulations that would create a legal process. Unfortunately, that's not happening. I'm shocked to see that what these regulations do is, as Fabian had said, rubber stamp illegal processes. I'm shocked by that. And I don't know whether you have, any of you have a comment on what the legal basis is for regulations to approve a process determined by court to be illegal. I don't understand that. Also, in one of your slides, it stated that the proposed regulations achieve proper public purpose. My first question is, what does that statement mean? I'm not sure what that, what that actually means. My second question is, what is proper public process? Especially today, on, on June 8th, 2021, what is proper public process? So if you could answer those two questions, I'd appreciate it. One more comment. Please accept everything that Vicky Spruils said tonight as my own testimony in this hearing as well. Perfectly stated, that, that advisory, the advisory board, I'm sorry, the MHP Advisory Committee for the Downtown Waterfront Municipal Harbor Plan was mostly ignored. Even the secretary pointed out that there were significant deficiencies in the public process. And yet, these proposed regulations call for no new public process. So I, I just don't understand what's going on here. But if you could answer the questions about achieve public, proper public process, I would appreciate that.
So I will, I will answer, let me answer in a, in a brief form. Mostly, we'd prefer to respond to comments in writing, but you've asked two very specific questions. I'm going to try to answer them. The reference to proper public purpose comes from the Chapter 91 regulations. I believe it also finds its root in the regula, in the statute, excuse me. I'm paraphrasing now, so I hope no one will hold me to task if I get some of this not quite right. The department may not issue a license unless that license is deemed to have, to provide a proper public purpose. Water-dependent use projects are by regulation deemed to be a proper public purpose. Non-water-dependent use licenses, such as residential, mixed-use, et cetera, such as the projects that close to people's minds at the moment. Those may not be licensed unless they, the department determines that they achieve a proper public purpose. That is later defined in, again, in 310 CMR 9. Only projects with me, those reference sections of the regulations can be found by the department to meet a proper public purpose. For instance, if a project does not meet the open space requirements, does not meet the setback, does not meet the height, this will sound very familiar, then the department may not find it meets a proper public purpose unless that project complies with the provisions of a municipal harbor plan. Provisions of the municipal harbor plan are intended to balance those, balance the public benefits with the private benefits through other means. And while not everyone in this room will agree with those means or that conclusion, that is the method by which that proper public purpose was defined. So that's, that's where that comes from. Proper public purpose, you can find it in the regulations. I suspect you've already looked at them. And then I believe the second question was about proper public process. Is that correct?
Actually, I was, I was speaking incorrectly. So it's proper public purpose. But the first question was, what does that statement mean? How do these proposed regs achieve proper public purpose? By what means do they achieve that if these regs don't call for reviewing public purpose? With any of these MHPs, but simply rubber stamping what were illegal processes? I, I don't, I don't understand it. And then my second question is, what is proper public purpose today, in today's world? As Vicky Spruil and Kathy Abbott and others have pointed out, it's a very different world today. Proper public purpose means something very different than even what it meant 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Those are thoughtful questions. I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to answer them in, in detail here. If you could kindly submit them in writing, we'd be grateful. We'd be happy to, to, I hate to use that phrase. I don't want to say taken under advisement. They're very good comments. So if you could please put them in writing. And I do defer you to the, the regulations regarding how proper public purpose is defined. And I, I understand that your question is, does that definition need to change from where it was in 1990 and when, and it was last updated? Perhaps that is the question you're trying to ask. So I, I encourage you to look at that section of the regulations. Try to go back and forth between screens. I don't want to try to give you a citation. It, it's in there. If you can't find it, I'm happy to point it out to you. That's where you're going to find that.
The email confirming my registration stated the question should be submitted to Stephanie Mora or either one of you, I assume.
You can, you can send them all to Stephanie if you'd like. So I, Stephanie created the Zoom link. This is a bit of a logistical thing. I'm sorry for the detail. Stephanie created the Zoom link. Therefore, those, the, the emails went to her. Copy, written comments on this matter are best submitted to the programmatic email, which is DEP dot waterways@mass.gov. That is, that is the best place to put them. If you sent them to Stephanie, they would find their home. If you sent them to me, they would also find their home in this matter. It will not be lost.
I'm referring specifically to questions in the interim.
Yeah, that, that is an unfortunate confusion and, and I, I should, we should have done some, perhaps some better housekeeping, but the, in this virtual world, what that was intended to mean with the Zoom link is if you're having trouble registering, contact the meeting host. But for sure, any substantive questions or, or comments that you intend to submit should be submitted as Daniel has described and that we posted in the chat. And that I'm happy to post it in the chat again. Yeah.
David, thank you for the thoughtful questions.
So at this point, I see that Lauren Honigan has raised her hand, so that means she does officially want to speak. Daniel, there was somebody who's commented, who was unable to mute themselves.
We'll do that right now. Excuse me. Sylvie Agudelo, resident of Boston, submits the following comment through the chat. I haven't read it all, so I hope it's good. I wanted to remind people that accessibility, equity, transparency and environmental protection begin at the municipal level. Municipalities drive this process and then ensure that the DEP and other legislation are carried out. My hope is that we will call on local leaders to exceed the recommendations of the DEP and that we will cultivate stewards in our communities, beginning with city and town halls, not just on the waterfront, but inland as well. We, citizens, need to better utilize the tools we have to shape legislation and leverage all the experience and data we have in the Commonwealth. I don't think, this is Sylvie speaking, I don't think we should just make the decision go away, but use all the energy and thinking that went into the lawsuit to debrief, correct and aggressively protect what little environment we have left. Again, that was from Sylvia Agudelo, resident of Boston. Stephanie?
At this point, we'll call on Lauren Honigan.
Hi, thank you. I agree with the previous comment. My concern is that this massive project is going to effectively continue to segregate and overwhelm this Boston area as a white neighborhood. I'm wondering, how, how does this project fit in with equity and affordable housing in Boston? And, and why is such a big thing necessary?
Those are, I'm not going to try not to bounce that one right away. Lauren, those are, those are, those are good questions. I I think that some of the answers on the affordable housing, I know that I'm not, I do not do BPDA permitting. I'm not, I could not cite for you the percentage of affordable housing in this, the proposed buildings. But I know that that exists. However, actually, those questions are beyond the scope of, of what, of what the municipal harbor planning process speaks to. That said, they are very important. So if you could submit those comments in writing, you know, we will, we'll certainly consider them. You know, the, the, one, one thing that has also changed from 1990 to today is the focus, rightly so, on equity, diversity and inclusion. Those are, those are substantial matters that have, we've learned a lot about climate change. We've learned a lot about that as well. As with other, I think Stephanie's going to cut me off any second. As with other, as with other regulations and statutes and procedures and policies and as with other regulations and statutes and procedures and policies and programs that were developed in the 90s and, and later and earlier, those topics do not neatly fit within the construct we presently have. And, and, and I think all of us struggle a little bit to make those, keep those topics at the front of how we review our projects, our applications, our regulations, and our policies. And I want to say from me directly and from our program and from our division and from our department, that those are matters of the utmost importance to DEP. You stick your hand up and they're like, yeah, 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 we know, we know, we know. And you know what? They do. So I strongly encourage you to put those comments in writing. I encourage all of you to put those types of comments in writing so that they're on the record and so that the department will consider them. And, and I really, I want to, I want to, I want to tip my cap to you and others for raising these, these issues, these topics. They may not be right at the top of the list of what the MHP regulation changes are about, but they're important. Please include them in your comments if you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other raised hands and no other notes in the chat, we have Lorraine Downey, who wanted to offer her comments. And that will, unless other, unless other hands pop up or other things pop into the chat, that'll be our final comment for the evening.
Hi, everyone. I just came back to Boston after being away for six years. Previous to that, I had spent 68 years of my life in Boston. And my working career was with the City of Boston and MWRA, working really primarily on two issues, public access to the waterfront and cleaning up the harbor. After, I left Boston because after being on so many committees of the municipal harbor plan or the Harbor Park Advisory Committee or all of these other things, hearing pretty much the same arguments against development along the waterfront, even though we were taking sites which were unaccessible and making them incredibly great and accessible to the public, both on and off the water and along the water, and having a variety of activities that happened. So the harbor has come a hell of a long way since I started in the early 80s. And now, to the point, I can't even afford to live in the City of Boston anymore after my whole life was there. But I understood, I haven't read any of the regulations. I understood this issue was because of a court case which said the proper signature, which should have been the DEP commissioner, was overdone by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs. Am I right or wrong by that? Did that initiate this whole thing?
Largely.
It's more complicated.
Everything's always more complicated.
Oh, Lorraine, you took the words right out of my mouth. You're absolutely right. You're right. Everything is very complicated. You, you, your, your quick summary pretty much hit on the head. So that was one of the specific points.
Issue, really, that has put in jeopardy not only Don Chiaforo's project of the Harbor Park Garage, but all of the harbor plans that have been made in the whole state, basically. And all of the hundreds and thousands of hours of work that have been done by citizens to be part of that. Now, the one thing I've learned, which I've been involved with citizen participation my whole career, is that participation doesn't necessarily mean you get what you want. Democracy is very messy. And we try and come out, at least we did on the municipal level, try and come out with something that allowed for development to happen, was sensitive to neighbors, got the waterfront improved, got public access for everybody. It doesn't matter where you live. And I just am so frustrated because I've come back after six years and heard some of the same issues because people did not get what they thought was right and it didn't go their way. They're trying to stop everything again. Now, there's a process for the municipal harbor plan to be changed. All right? It gets renewed. And there are meetings that they have and people have input in those meetings. There is, in addition to that, a, as I understand it, a whole climate change resiliency thing going on in the City of Boston to address that issue. So my, my perspective is, we got the municipal harbor plan. It, maybe you didn't get what you liked in it, but it's a process that the city can go through, that developers can go through, that Chapter 91 can approve things that a local community agrees is best for them. So I, 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 I don't know. I'm just like totally frustrated by coming back to this city that I love and can't live here anymore and hearing the same objections to public improvements and public access along the waterfront. And by, by the way, by some of the same locations. Sorry. But I find this a little frustrating. But that's all I have to say.
Lorraine, thank you. Thank you for sticking with us through the, all the way to 7:46. I'm, I am a great fan of hearing from former city officials who have been around.
It was no Public Access 91 when we started using the Wetlands Protection Act to get eight feet of a sidewalk on a building because I knew I needed the public to be able to see the water, to see how bad it was. And the only way we could do that was build a sidewalk on it. And then we had the Corico decision and the Chapter 91's with 91 regulations, which, you know. So we've had major, major improvements. The city is so wonderful and so accessible to everybody. And it's just frustrating when I'm, I'm gone for six years and I was so fed up with the project before that. And to see it still stop because of opposition, it's just incredibly frustrating.
All right, I'm going to put you in the category on my list here with Bob Albee. As you know, he's a bit of a city hero. So thank you again. Thank you. Thank you again for your comments, Lorraine. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you, Bruce. I totally agreed with everything you said.
That means the world to me.
Stephanie, are there others? Do you see?
There are no others who have raised hands or, or entered their names in the chat. I do want to assure everybody that we are not only monitoring the chat, but saving it as well. So anybody who...
There is one, Ash Dyer. Ash Dyer has a hand raised if you'd like to speak.
Oh, I see that now. Yep. Thank you. I'm a resident of the waterfront. I've lived there for 11 years. And I just want to point out to people that this, this whole issue has come up, not just because people are obstructive about something being built in their backyard, which frankly is a big issue, but it's because people haven't been listening to those concerns and all of the things that were written in the 90s have not been followed. We're talking about ways that we're going around that, ways that we're creating holes in the municipal harbor plan, right? This is a 600-foot tower in a place that the municipal harbor plan said, build a 200-foot tower. And it's not just one. There's multiple of those that are going on. So I think it's really important that we reflect on what was done at that time versus what's being done now and how that's all working through. And that we go back to our knitting and think through what, what's actually going. And I think that's the comments that Vicky had and the comments that Peter had. And a lot of the things is that we're not sticking to our knitting here. And that's the reason that this is drawn out so long, is that people haven't been listened to. The process hasn't been followed. And that's why it came to a court case. So I hope that people consider that there's a lot more to this than just, hey, the wrong signature was on the form. And that it's really that we need a more effective public process that follows all of the regulations and everything that was put in place by all the hard work that everybody put in and doesn't just let people like Don Chiaforo go around and do what they want, except for when the FAA says 800 feet is too tall because it'll stop the flights out of Logan. That's all I have to add at this point. And I'll submit some written comments as well. Thank you all for your time. And thank you, Daniel and team, for hearing us out on this.
Ash, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
All right. I, I, this morning, I made the, this afternoon, I made the mistake of not flipping through the, to see if anyone has raised their hand at the end. We're getting to last call here for this evening. If anyone else would like to offer any verbal testimony, now is the time.
And there will be two additional hearings to be announced in mid-July, as Daniel mentioned earlier.
That is correct. Let me. All right. Okay. I think we're going to close, I think we're going to close this evening's hearing. We're still recording for a moment. Go back to my little script here. Thank you. Thank you all for attending this evening. I mean that, we try not to get on soapbox here. This is, this is a matter of critical interest to, to a lot of people, to the department, to EEA, to the neighbors, to the cities, the towns, et cetera. Thank you for participating. Again, while we have recorded this session this evening and the department will maintain this recording so that we can refer back to comments that don't also show up in writing, we strongly encourage folks to submit comments in writing so that they are more easily accessible, read, considered, et cetera. Comments should be submitted respectfully. Comments should be submitted to, by email, to depwaterways@mass.gov. In the event you wish to submit a written comment as well or in place, those, those, those materials can be submitted to the department, addressed to myself, Daniel P A D I E N, Mass DEP Waterways Regulation Program, 1 Winter Street, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108. Please indicate subject line outside the envelope, et cetera, Chapter 91 slash MHP regulations. As I mentioned earlier, and as Stephanie just mentioned, in response to public comment and public requests, the department has determined that we will hold two additional public hearings on this matter. Those hearings will be in mid-July. The method, the time, date, and method for participating in that, in those hearings will be advertised in the Massachusetts Register through a public notice. That public notice will also appear in the Boston Globe and the Fall River Herald. That public notice, along with any additional materials, including public comments received to date, this recording and the recording from the public hearing that commenced at 1 o'clock this afternoon will all be available on the department's website. If you have any difficulty identifying that webpage, please email depwaterways@mass.gov and we will direct you to it. In fact, we will update our automatic response to indicate that web address so folks can find it quickly. Any and all comments are welcome. Please submit them. The deadline for submitting public comments, as noticed in the public notice you all saw, was previously June 22nd. That public comment deadline will be extended until the end of July. The specific date will be included in the public notice. That date will be determined based on the acceptance by the Secretary of State's office of our public notice for publication. Stephanie, Kathy, give anything you'd like to add? I'm sorry, Kathy Baskin?
I just want to thank everyone for your participation tonight. Really appreciate your comments. And so, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Folks, thank you again for participating. It's nice to see your faces. I look forward to seeing your letters.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Daniel, thanks, Stephanie. Thanks, Kathy.